I'd like to call this meeting to order. The annual town meeting of the town of Bennington. Ask you please rise and join me in pledging allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we're a citizen, one nation under God, indivisible, in which there is no flaw or error.
Thank you. Our moderator cannot be with us tonight, Mr. Jim Colvin. So we must elect tonight a moderator pro tem who will serve only to facilitate this evening's meeting. So may I have a nomination?
Move Tim Corcoran.
I have a motion and a second from Mr. Tim Corcoran. Are there any motions from the floor, any nominations? I only have one nomination. We'll call for the vote. All in favor of Mr. Tim Corcoran to be the moderator pro tem, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed? Mr. Corcoran, would you please take the stand?
Take the stand? Ooh. Sounds like a trial to me.
It's a typical election for Tim Corcoran. I mean, let's go.
Thank you. First, I'll read the warning for the 2013 Annual Town Meeting. The residents of the town of Bennington qualified to, by law, to vote in town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bennington Fire Facility on Rivers Street, Lincoln Street entrance in the said town on Monday, March 4, 2013, at 7:00 PM, or immediately following the Bennington School District Annual Meeting should that run over, to transact a business specified to be done from the floor. If you are a resident of the town of Bennington and intend to be present at that meeting and are hearing impaired, arrangements will be made for a sign interpreter to be present at this meeting. For necessary arrangements, please contact Stuart A. Hurd, Town Manager, at the Bennington Town Office, 2005 South Street, P.O. Box 469, Bennington, Vermont, or call 802-442-1037 no later than Friday, February 22, 2013. Bound to completion of such business, the meeting will stand adjourned until Tuesday, March 5, 2013, at the Bennington Fire Facility on Rivers Street, Lincoln Street entrance. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for the election of officers and voting on all ballot articles specified. However, those on the checklist to vote in the village of North Bennington shall vote for the election of officers in all ballot articles at the North Bennington Village Office on Main Street in North Bennington. The Bennington Fire Facility above mentioned is hereby established as a central polling place for those on the checklist to vote in the said Bennington. The deadline for registering to vote is February 27, 2013, at 5:00 PM at the Bennington Town Clerk's Office. Business to be transacted from the floor. Article 1, Town Report, to hear the report of officers to be taken and to take appropriate action thereon. Is there a motion to accept the town report?
So...
There has been a motion made.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so vote and so order. Article 2, Select Board Members Compensation, to determine what compensation shall be paid to the town select board members. Is there a motion on that article?
I move that we keep them the way they are. They're special enough.
Okay. A motion has been made to keep the compensation the same as it has been in the previous year. Is there a second to that motion? That motion has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. Article 3, Other Business, to transact other proper business when met. Chairman Joseph Kraszik asked to have the floor.
Did we ask the wrestling team to come in, please?
We couldn't help ourselves.
There's nobody in 250-pound class, so I'm okay.
They might be quicker, though.
in the violence just brought a great record here to the town of Bennington. Twenty-fifth consecutive state championship. It's a national record brought by our coach and coaches and his team you see in front of you. So quite a record there. Another national record, the most individual championships of any high school in the country. Couple other things I just want to mention, and I want to talk about, Coach Legacy has asked me to talk about some of the coaches that, if not here tonight, that helped him over his 25 years, 28 years to coach him. Rick Madison, I don't know if Rick's here. Okay, none of these are here, Scott?
Uh, someone.
Okay, Sean Legacy, are you here? Bruce Lackey, Dwayne Metcalf, Paul Kukarian, Roy Slay, Tamarain Casado?
Yes.
Fred LeBlanc, Derek Deacon, Ren Lackey, T.J. Maroney, Ken Volker, are you here tonight? Okay, I guess they're not. But there's the guys that's helped him create this dynasty that's here. Tonight, we have with us is Coach Buck Fucking Oice, Zachir, Geras Becker, Fred Ladette, Frank Ladette, Kyle Willard, Pam Pierce, Jeff Weitzel, Wayne Hall, DJ Schafter, Shaffer, Brett Bizarro, Burizo, Robert LaBlake, LaBray, and Scott Legacy the second. You, Scott, here for Scott?
Scott just went back to college.
He went back to college. Good point. First, it's important and grateful that we can have him come here in our own town. We're talking about a legacy right now, and this is more than just the coach himself. To the team player, I just want to say that from my perspective, over my life experiences, the discipline and the teamwork that your coaches have taught you are going to carry you a long way in life. It's already been proven by many of the wrestlers at Mount Anthony that started off 25 years ago, who are now business people in town, professional law enforcement officers, many were coaches in colleges and high schools. So it's quite a legacy that Mr. Legacy, Coach Legacy, is here. Are your parents here tonight, Scott?
Yeah.
Where are they? Please stand. Harold?
They are standing.
Right here.
Oh, watch out for Harold. Harold, you started all this. You and your wife. Come on, Ford, help him up.
Go right through here.
Coach Legacy, you've got something really to be proud of. Not just the team, the number of you have here, but what you've done to this community because you brought a sense of pride to all of us. And I know you're a modest guy. I've seen some of your quotes in the paper. You don't like to say a lot. That's how most honest guys are. But we're going to take it add to the problem here in Bennington by recognizing the team. Now, we got a mistake on this sign. Where's that 250-pound guy? Help me on the sign.
He's over there.
Come here. Well, I can handle you. What you got there? Hold it up. This is a sign that's going to be posted every entrance of Bennington. It says, "National Record Setting MA US Patriots Wrestling Team, 1988 to 2013, consecutive years." Are we going to change the sign or just going to have a streamer saying, "Seven New England Championships"? That's quite a thing, too. So guys, you're going to see this, and gals, you're going to see this posted. And everybody in Mrs. Bennington knows we have a championship team. So Scott, congratulations to you.
On behalf of the entire team and our wrestling community and our family, we have a lot of parents here today, the town of Bennington, and everybody that's been involved, our high school, our school administrators, who support us tremendously and all these kids. Couldn't be done without supportive families and a tremendous group of kids over a 25-year period, but actually starting back at 28 years when I had six kids on the team. Actually, four that over wrestled six full that first year. So I remember the building blocks. But we hope, one of the things we discussed even this weekend when we were representing the Mount Indian Day in the town of Bennington as the New England Championship is our hope was to bring back the New England title, not just for ourselves, but for the town of Bennington. So thank you very much for all the support over the years, and we take it one day, one year at a time, and we hope we can continue to stay strong and represent. Thank you very much for representing. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. We have slowly been funded.
How much have you raised?
Most of it, about $340,000.
We need that stuff.
No, okay. You'd have it like that.
Scott, good job.
Thank you very much.
We're still on Article 3, Other Business.
Later in the meeting, we're going to go over the ballot articles that will be on the ballot tomorrow, one by one. Is there any other person here that would like to address the board of the town meeting? Mary?
Hello, I'm Mary Garrish. I'm president of the Vermont Workers Center, and I'm here tonight on behalf of One Movement for People in the Planet, which is a collaboration between many organizations, including 350 and the Vermont Workers Center. And I would like to propose a resolution from the floor against tar sands oil being piped through Vermont. And as most of you know, the pipeline that they proposed to use for the tar sands oil to go through Vermont to Maine is a 60-year-old ceramic pipeline. This oil is the most toxic oil there is. The whole reason that it's not going through Canada is the Canadian people won't allow it because it destroys farmlands. It would go right under our water table so that any leaks would go into the water and destroy our crops. So I would like to propose the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the town expresses its opposition to the transport of tar sands oil through Vermont and its deep concern about the risks of such transport for public health and safety, property values, and our national resources, and will therefore encourage the state of Vermont to phase out fuel purchases from vendors whose refinery sources of origin use any form of tar sands oil, and to call upon the Vermont State Legislature to ensure through environmental impact reviews of any tar sands-related pipeline proposals, including the health and safety impacts of potential tar sands oil spills, along with clear guidelines for tracking the origins and chemical composition of pipeline contents and feedstocks.
Okay. You've heard the resolution. Is there any comment? Could you give a copy of that to the... Linda's taking the minutes, please. Seeing no one wanting to comment on this, all those in favor of the resolution, as red, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and it's a vote and so order. Just for the comment that the resolutions here are non-binding, obviously. They're, it's a statement from the people that were here at the town meeting. Still on Article 3, is there any other person that wishes to address the board or the members of the meeting? Al Ray?
I'm looking on page seven here in the financial section. It's under parking. Page seven, the financial section.
Yeah.
I look back, 2009, there was $25,000. Then I count, 2010, there was $32,000. 2011, $42,000. 2012, there was $335,000. I wish somebody could explain to me how we went from $25,000 to $335,000 or what it is.
What page do you want it?
Page seven in the financial section.
Table two?
Page seven. At the bottom, it says, under program expenses.
I didn't pay seven, I got it.
Yeah, it started in the middle. In the middle, I think.
Let's see, program expenses. Seven.
Like this.
Yeah. So what's the, what are you reading?
I'm reading parking.
Parking.
Parking. Park, parking cars, I guess.
Have a point of admission. Do we know exactly which page is under discussion?
He said page seven.
Of the financial section.
Of the financial section.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We got two pages sevens, so it's a little confusing.
Okay, here's it. Tim, I believe he's in the audit section.
It's in the financial section.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, he's talking on the parking issue.
Yeah.
Do we have a parking lot or I just don't know?
Stuart, do you understand this question?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I believe. I'll try to. What we're looking at here in table two is a change in net assets. It's a determination by the auditors and by the finance department as to the value of the asset, which is the parking lots and parking properties that the town of Bennington owns and controls. So it's a determination for the audit purposes of the value of that asset.
So all of a sudden, they decided it went up triple or double or 10 times practically?
All I can speak to is what the auditors have presented.
So it has nothing to do with the board and strictly with the auditors?
Actually, there's been no expenditures on parking, on the assets themselves over the last fiscal year. This is just a change in valuation.
Okay. So that would be like the parking lot on North Street, parking lot on Pleasant Street, parking lot at the town office. Any parking lot is owned by the state. The auditors have placed that as an asset at that value.
Do the auditors do that with other buildings and properties, too? They just determine the value?
Yes. Part of the change in the way the general accounting services rules and regulations over the last couple of years, we have had to place a value in concert with the auditors on all of the assets of the town, highways, buildings, parking areas, all of those things. And what you're seeing here is, I think, a refining of those values and a redetermination of those values.
Okay, one other question. Several places in here mentions FEMA funds. I just wonder with a sequester, how will that affect our ability to get FEMA funds?
It should not change our opportunity. The monies that we are seeking from the Federal Emergency Management Agency are monies that were appropriated probably two years ago at the national level to deal with Tropical Storm Irene and Tropical Storm Lee, which followed. The newer storms that have hit New Jersey and New York have had additional appropriations already made for them. So that money is set aside at the congressional level and...
So basically, there should be no change?
Should be no change. The issue is eligibility.
Might not be anybody there to send a check until they go over this thing.
Still on Article 3, is there any other business that anyone wanted to bring before the town meeting? The Treasurer, Joan Pinsono.
Since it's income tax time, I just want to remind everyone that if you are domiciled in the state of Vermont, you own and occupy your property as your primary residence as of April 1, you must file your HS 122. This is new this year. Everyone was made a non-resident as of January 1. So you have to do this. Otherwise, you're going to see a big increase in your property tax.
You can get an extension until September 1st.
But you will be fined.
You will be fined 1%.
You have to file it by April 15. Even if you file for an extension, you have to do this HS 122.
Where are the forms?
In the tax book.
You can go online and get them that way or in the Vermont book.
Jason, you have it.
Joan, just to clarify, too, if anybody is also applying for what's commonly known as the pre-bate or the state payment, I think the Form HI 144 needs to be filed simultaneously with the Homestead filing. So those two forms need to be filed together, and they need to be filed annually at this point, set up.
You must declare your property first before a property tax adjustment will accept that.
And this is for primary residents only?
It's important we really do that. I know in the past years, we've, Mr. Corcoran, myself, representatives, Representative Bennington, we've got individual battles with the state, and it's hard to win because they say, hey, you got a suspense date? It's been publicized. I don't think we have one anymore. Maybe one, one, a couple, but please do it. Get it up there on time, reach the suspense, don't pay the penalty, and we won't have to go through trying to make things.
It might be worthwhile to mention those two form numbers again.
HS 122, HI 144.
If you have a Vermont person, prepare your taxes. They'd be very familiar with those forms. In AARP, I understand, Office on Aging, they do help people that are filing a simple tax to fill those forms out.
Right, yes, even the people, especially the elderly, they're the ones I'm concerned about because they don't file property tax or file income tax, but this has to be done.
Is there any other business on Article 3?
Is that going to end Article 3?
Yes.
Okay. On the board tonight, we have two members who have chose not to seek reelection to their seats here in the select board, and their duties will expire on the last day of this month. Tomorrow, there'll be three seats open up for election, and we'll have three new people or different people, or maybe some unsang people on the 1st of, on the 1st of April. But I want to thank the two members that have been on the board. First of all, Chris Oldham, who's been on the board for nine years, three terms. Very tough job, trying to balance his duties here on the select board and his own personal career. And Mr. Jason Morrissey, who's been on now two terms. It's been great to have the diversity. I'm going in my 12th year. I've been serving both these guys. It's great to have the diversity on the board, I think, because you get the discussion at the level where people will have to really think about which way we vote on it, how do we, how do we make policy, whatever. So I want to personally thank Jason and Chris for the service here on the board, and my suspicion, both of you being youngsters, we'll probably see you again down the road sometime. So thanks a lot, guys.
Also add to that, Jim Colvin.
That's correct. I'm moderator.
Who is retiring as moderator, too. We also thank him. Any other business to be transacted under Article 3? Business to be transacted by ballot Tuesday, March 5, 2013. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the polling places specified above. The election of a town clerk for a three-year term, election of a treasurer, three-year term, election of a moderator, three-year term. In select board election, three members of the select board residing in the town of Bennington shall be elected for three-year terms. Article 1 tomorrow. Shall the town appropriate for the next fiscal year, July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, the sum of $10,964,750 consisting of the following. $3,621,210 for the laying out, maintaining, and repairing of the highways and bridges of the town. $7,343,540 for the payment of the following. Any indebtedness not otherwise specified, provided for, interest on indebtedness, legally authorized state and county taxes, the protection and defense of the common rights and interests of the inhabitants of the town of Bennington, and for other necessary essential expenditures. The proposed budget includes $30,000 for fire equipment, $10,000 for fire communication equipment, $10,000 for parking improvements, $50,000 for highway bridges repairs, $214,780 for the healthcare reserve workers' compensation insurance, and any unexpendited portion which will be retrieved subsequent years for that purpose. Is there any questions and comments on the town budget? Article 2, Shall the Voters Increase Fiscal Year 2014 General Fund by the Sum of $2,700 for Parent Recreation, Inc. Is there anyone that wanted to comment on that?
I just want to state, when I look at...
My name is Scott Malinowski. I'm a resident of Bennington. I just noticed that when I looked at these numbers, they are all stated as increases or decreases, whichever way it might be. And just for the clarity of the report, it would be nice if it showed the entire amount, just not the increase or the decrease, so that we don't have to look for reference in terms of what was appropriated last year, and then an increase or a decrease for this year's voting purpose. That's it.
For instance, I don't see a decrease. Scott?
I just happen to say increase or decrease, but if they're all increases in here, then they're increases.
Yeah, but you have to state each one separately.
They're not all increases.
Yeah.
But they're not all increases either.
These are the agencies that have separate articles on the ballot are requesting funds.
These will be in addition to the budget that's already voted previously.
I guess that's what I mean. You know, it'd be nice to show that budget plus this increase, whatever, so it's all in one item.
Trouble is, they haven't been voted yet.
I think the misunderstanding is it's not an increase over last year, it's an increase to the Article 1 budget. So they would increase the tax rate and the budget by the number that's in that article. It stands alone. That's how much money by itself, if I'm understanding your question. It's not an increase over what they got last year, what we spent last year. It's an increase over the entire budget. So it's not a comparison at all. It's just, that's the number right there that you're looking at.
Yeah, and just for history, we used to lump these all together and give you one big number, and the reason we've split them out into individual articles is to give you a choice. You may want to vote for one and not vote for another, so... You may wanna vote for one and not vote for another, so that's why they're listed individually.
Article Three, shall the voters increase the fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by the sum of three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for Project Against Violent If anybody wants to comment on any of these, uh, feel free to, uh, raise your hand. Article Four, shall the voters increase fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund budget to some forty-five hundred dollars for Vermont Center for Independent Living. Article Five, shall the voters increase fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by the sum of seventy-two hundred dollars for the Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program, known as RSVP. Article Six, shall the voters increase fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by the sum of seventy-two hundred dollars for the Tutorial Center. Article Seven, shall the voters increase fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by the sum of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, Inc.
I'd like to speak on that one just for a second. If you watched our last select board meeting, the executive director of, uh, the Homeless Coalition was front of us and said, because of the situation they find themselves in now, that if the voters approve this, they cannot accept it at this point in time. However, if they can get their financial situation in place before this budget goes to effect, and the voters do approve it, then we can pass the money on to them at that point in time. They are in trouble financially, but, uh, they've got some house cleaning they've gotta do over there, and some, uh, they've got some outside agencies helping them. So I just wanna make sure you know that you can still vote for this, yes, if it's approved, uh, but if they don't, if they don't come to us, I think we said what, June, when we said the tax rate, June ninth or something? They don't come to us by that time to where they can accept it, that money will not be, uh, assessed on a tax rate.
Joan? Thank, thank you very much for mentioning that. I just wanted to clear up some confusion. My name is Chris Oldham. I, I do sit on the Board of Directors for the Coalition, for the Homeless, and I know that there's a lot of confusion out there. Uh, we do need your support, so this is an opportunity to still help us, and I'm speaking as a board member for the Coalition. Um, should you vote for us, we pass, we will have correct financials by the time that, um, check comes around. So I ask you for your support, and I thank you very much for the support that you've given us thus far.
Mary?
Yes, and I'm also a board member, and the correct financials are, are actually going to be audited, um, financials, so that everyone can...
Is there any further comment? Article Eight, shall the voters increase fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by this amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the Bennington Free Clinic.
Do we wanna say something?
Bruce?
Sure. Bruce Lee Clark, I am the president of the Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, which operates both, uh, well, the Food and Fuel Fund, as well as the Kitchen Cupboard, and the Bennington Free Clinic. Uh, about eighty percent of our patients come from the town of Bennington. We don't just ask the voters of the town of Bennington for contributions, but we do ask for some of this. I would, I thought you ought to know a little bit about the scope of the services. Uh, in the last year, we provided six hundred and thirty-five physician mid-level practitioner visits to three hundred and thirty-nine patients, so take about eighty percent of that, they're Benningtonians. Of those three hundred and thirty-nine, two hundred and thirty-two of those patients were new, and of the new patients, a hun, a hundred and seventy-six were assisted to apply for Vermont State Health Insurance Programs, and, uh, of those, a hundred and fifty-four were found to be eligible. So in the long run, when they come to the clinic, what we're trying to do is also get them onto state insurance, so that in fact, if they go to the hospital, then the, then they're not, then they're, they're insured, insured patients rather than, uh, charity patients necessarily. So there are a number of good things that happen. We are increasing the number of, of clinics that we, we do have, and, uh, I do want to also just say a word of thanks, uh, to the eighty or so volunteers who make that happen. Uh, it's really not possible for it, for the amount of money that we raise, uh, it's really not possible to provide this kind of healthcare without the medical personnel, the nurses, the doctors, and the laypeople who volunteer. Some of you are in the room tonight, and, and I wanna just take this moment publicly to thank you for all of the work that you've done on behalf of these folks. It's really quite wonderful. Uh, I also know that our, our medical director, Dick Dundas, is here. He wanted to say something tonight, just on behalf of, uh, what took place yesterday.
Dr. Dundas?
Hello. Uh, we had our fundraiser, our annual fundraiser yesterday. It's called Ski for the BFC, which is Bennington Free Clinic. We helped have it up at Prospect Mountain, and it was a beautiful day for skiing, believe it or not. They have a lot of snow up there. Uh, we've done this annually now for the past four years. It's our major fundraiser. If any of you have not contributed, you still could. But why I wanted to speak was that, uh, uh, one of, we have sponsors in town, we go around town, and we get sponsors for our event, and we have a lot of generous people in this town, and we raise a fair amount of money that way. But I wanted to mention one sponsor in particular, and that is the Nordic Ski Team. Each year, they have been one of our sponsors. This is the Mount Anthony Nordic Ski Team. Each year, they have been one of our sponsors, and this year, by going to aunts and uncles and grandparents, and mothers and teachers, and whomever, they raised two thousand, six hundred dollars for us. So these kids are really good athletes, good students, and really good citizens.
Thank you. Article Nine, shall the voters increase fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by the sum of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for BRO-C, which is known as Barack Community Action in Southern, in southwestern Vermont.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann St. John, and I'm here on behalf of Barack Community Action in southwestern Vermont. First of all, I'd like to thank the town for its support over the years. Uh, it's, it's an enormous help to us to know that we have, uh, the support of the town in, in our effort to help, uh, income-eligible folks. Uh, we've, we've helped in the past year around three thousand, five hundred households in Bennington. These are singles, families, uh, elders, disabled people, with a variety of different kinds of assistance, uh, including housing, utilities, food. We have a food shelter that's available daily to people who are in need. Uh, we do tax preparation, we have gardening programs. Fuel assistance is of course a big program for us at this time of year, and the average fuel assist right now is running around five hundred and eighty dollars. It depends, of course, on the type of fuel used, but we're seeing ten to fifteen clients come in for fuel assistance every day. So you can just do the math, and you can see that this is a huge need in our community, and we're happy to be there to leverage the kinds of funds that we can access on, on behalf of low-income folks here. We also have a weatherization program, which of course, uh, provides free weatherization services to income-eligible households, and therefore conserves those precious fuel dollars and uses them wisely. We have a micro-business development program for, uh, helping folks start a small business, and we provide budget counseling and case management for everyone we see, because we understand that education and employment are ultimately the keys to getting yourself out of poverty. So again, we do thank you for your past support. Uh, we hope that people will vote for, uh, uh, our support again this year. We don't take that for granted, so thank you.
Any other comments? Article Ten, shall the voters increase the fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by the sum of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the southwestern Vermont Council on Aging. Article Eleven, shall the voters increase the fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by the sum of eleven thousand dollars for Bennington Project Independence. Article Twelve, shall the voters increase fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund by the sum of twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars for Visiting Nurses Association and Hospice, southwestern Vermont Healthcare. That would conclude the ballot articles that will be voted on tomorrow at the Firehouse and at the, um, train station village offices in North Bennington. There's no other business, a motion would be in order. Motion has been made, and it's been seconded to, this town meeting be adjourned tomorrow morning at seven AM. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?